Call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. I want to thank my colleagues on council and welcome all of our citizens, our city staff, family, friends. Thank you for coming out tonight. I would now ask for everyone if you could please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here. We have the minutes of a special call meeting on December 11th, 2023, a called meeting on December 12th, 2023, and a regular meeting on December 12th, 2023. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to accept.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Madam Clerk, would you please read the City Council speaker rules?
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach your speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. And at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of the City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And I do have to pause just for a moment to step away to take a very important call, and I'll be right back. Thank you.
Go. Okay. All right, citizens and members of council, we are entering into a public hearing, and that's item 2407. And Madam City Clerk, if you will read the item.
Public hearing with respect to the adoption of a proposed ordinance setting rates and terms for short-term dark fiber leases. The proposed ordinance includes the following rate schedule. One, regular rate, $450 strand mile month. Two, bridge crossing rate, $900 strand mile month.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a presenter for this item?
We have Kelsey Soaringa here from the City Attorney's Office to just give a quick overview of what you all will be voting on.
Welcome, Attorney Soaringa. You have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. So this is the public hearing.
We can hear you.
Oh, sorry. A little too short. So this is a public hearing for comments for the dark fiber lease rates that the city can adopt to lease out portions of the fiber for very short terms, no more than five years, and under the terms that are listed in the ord- that were listed in your agenda packets. So that's the $450 or $900 per strand, per mile, per month. But it has to follow very specific parameters, and it would only be available to entities who have already come in front of City Council. So this is the public hearing portion of it, and then later on the agenda would be the actual adoption of the measure.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Soaringa. Are there any registered speakers for this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, it is a public hearing, so if you would like to speak to this item, the floor is open. You may proceed to the podium. You can't, you couldn't hear her?
No.
Okay. So the public hearing is about a proposed ordinance for our rates for our dark fiber, the fiber that we are laying for offering services to our citizens, and it is relative to your concerns about the rates. You would probably have to have had more information or more knowledge on the dark fiber, what it is, what the intent and use will be for the city, and if you agree with those rates. We've had, as our authority, have already reviewed those options with our providers, and we have found that they are comparable to the rates that are being offered within the region. So if there are no speakers, if there are any questions or concerns, it is a public hearing. You may proceed to the podium, and we'll try to address your concerns. Yes.
Do I need to get my address? I forgot.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Rhody Young. Why you look at me like that? Hey! It's good to see you as well. I'm Rhody Young. I'm from Norfolk, Virginia, and I do agree with the rates. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Vice Mayor. Once again, this is a public hearing. You do not, or you are not required to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing. If you wish to come forward and speak on this item, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. We are in need of a motion. I mean... Oh, it's in the City Manager's Report. That's right. That's when we're actually voting on it. That's right. Okay. So now, we'll actually vote on that item in the City Manager's Report. Let's move forward with the City Manager's Report. The next item on the agenda is item 24-08. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the City Manager to pay a one-time bonus to part-time and grant employees of the Sheriff's Office in the net amounts of $2,065, respectively.
Thank you, ma'am. To my council colleagues, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-09. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a safer communities program grant in the amount of $2,846,000 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds to the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to implement community-based strategies to address the root causes and conditions of violent crime.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-10. Oh, Madam, no, no. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-10. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing an extension of the city's cable franchise agreements with Cox and Verizon through December 10th, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-11. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance setting rates and terms for short-term dark fiber leases.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to, was that item 2412?
We're on 12 now.
Right. Item 24-12. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting community development block grant program income in the amount of $108,421 and appropriated said amount in the FY 2024 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam, I mean, Madam Clerk, would you, any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-13, and this is a three-part item. And item eight is, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an allocation of $631,384 from the State Compensation Board and appropriating $313,911 to the judicial category and $317,473 to the general government category of the FY 2024 General Fund Budget for the purpose of funding targeted salary increases for state-supported local employees.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item B. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an allocation of $218,168 from the State Compensation Board and appropriating it to the non-departmental category of the FY 2024 General Fund Budget, reducing rural property tax revenue as a budgetary revenue source by $214,356 and increasing expenditures in the non-departmental category of the FY 2024 General Fund Budget by $3,812 for the purpose of funding a 2% salary increase that was previously approved as part of the state-supported local employee cost of living adjustment.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item C. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an allocation of $13,781 from the State Compensation Board and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for the purpose of funding targeted and 2% salary increases for the Portsmouth Drug Prosecutor Grant administrated, administrator...
Administered.
Administered. I'm sorry. I'm seeing things. By the Portsmouth Commonwealth's Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes? Okay. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-14. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting federal block grant funding in the amount of $70,085 via the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for the delivery of services to individuals recovering from mental health, substance abuse, or co-occurring disorders.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-15. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting StepBA funding in the amount of $90,750 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS to provide mental health services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And now we are at item 24-16. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting projects for assistance in transition from homelessness program funds in the amount of $53,715 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for training, travel, and outreach services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 24-17. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting hazardous material emergency response funding in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said sum in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 24-18. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering on this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach for the Hampton Roads Computer-Aided Dispatch Interoperability Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. That concludes our City Manager's Report. We have now come to the item which is new business, item 24-19, boards and commissions. And Mr. Moody, are there any boards and commissions information tonight, or business tonight?
There are no board and commission.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to the next item, which is item 24-20, items submitted by council. And Madam Clerk, would you please?
Mayor, I'd like to add an item to the agenda for this section.
Okay.
Council members, can we do these two items and then, if you don't mind?
That's fine.
Just so we stand for it.
So, Madam Clerk, can you please read the resolution for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution opposing acquisition of the Virginia International Gateway Property by the Port of Virginia.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you would please bear with me, I do have a letter to read on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth. And this letter is addressed to Senator L. Luis Lucas, 18th District; Senator Emily M. Jordan, 17th District; Delegate Don L. Scott, Speaker, 18th District; and Delegate C. E. Cliff Hayes, Jr., 91st District. Proposed acquisition of Virginia International Gateway by the Port of Virginia. Dear members of the Portsmouth Legislative Delegation, please find the enclosed a resolution opposing the acquisition of Virginia International Gateway by the Port of Virginia. The Portsmouth City Council unanimously adopted the resolution on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. As you know, VIG is a large and valuable port terminal located in the city of Portsmouth. While the port currently operates as VIG, the underlying land and improvements are in private ownership. The private owners currently pay approximately $9 million a year in real and personal property taxes, equating to roughly nine cents on the Portsmouth tax rate. The loss of this revenue source would have a devastating impact on our city budget. The port has indicated an intent to work with the city to reach agreeable terms to make the city whole from the overwhelming financial loss this acquisition will create. However, such in agreement is made and the terms are in place, it is important to stand against this acquisition unequivocally. Portsmouth is proud, and Portsmouth is strong, but as one of Virginia's most fiscally strapped cities, it is not strong enough to carry the burden of achieving financial savings for the Commonwealth through the port's acquisition. Expecting the city to do so is simply cruel and unjust. The City Council, therefore, urges you to do all in your power to prevent the acquisition of VIG by the Port of Virginia unless and until real long-term permanent solutions are securely in place to make Portsmouth fully whole from this devastating economic loss it will create. Until such time, we stand firm on our attached resolution that opposes the acquisition and ask you to do the same. Thank you, as always, for your unwavering support of Portsmouth and its citizens. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Our second item under items submitted by council. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the reimbursement of certain legal fees and expenses for Officer Vincent McLean pursuit to Section 15.2-1711 of the Virginia Code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Can we get a little bit more detail on this?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Mayor, members of, Vice Mayor, members of council. There is a code section in the Virginia Code that allows for a police officer who finds himself either subject to an investigation or is charged with a crime that is ultimately dismissed, that the city is allowed to reimburse the legal fees that that officer expended in that defense, so long as he was acting in the furtherance of his employment at the time of the offense conduct. In this case, Mr. McLean was charged with involuntary manslaughter, voluntary manslaughter. That charge was dismissed by a jury of his peers here in Portsmouth. The application of this, of this code section would be appropriate. The attorney in this case has signed an affidavit confirming that no other fees have been received by any other source. We have reviewed the timesheet and the expenses, and those are reasonable. And so, having those elements checked off pursuant to the code, it is ripe for this council to then reimburse those fees.
Is that, did you have anything further, sir? Okay. So we have a motion and a second? And we have had?
Yes.
And so...
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, could you give us the amount so that, since it's a public expense?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the total legal bill was $142,120. It included with expert fees the amount of $23,388. This arises out of a jury trial, which includes all investigation, the jury trial itself, and no further costs outside of that. This is market and reasonable for a jury trial of this magnitude where a person was charged with a homicide. And this was actually the second trial by Mr. McLean where he was found not guilty.
Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this may be for a city manager or a city attorney. Does that come out of our risk management fund or our general risk management? Thank you.
So we were still, if that...
I'm sorry. Let me just check that.
I think Ms. Terry, Ms. Terry... She may have not have said it loud enough, but it's okay. Yes, ma'am. Are we all clear?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So we still need, I think, council members? We're ready to vote? So I would ask that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
What?
What, what?
Any public comment?
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you. And we now have Vice Mayor Lucasberg. She has the floor to add an item submitted by council members.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an item to appoint our city assessor. I guess if that can be made in the form of a motion, Madam Clerk? Okay. A move that we add an item to appoint our city assessor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? And Madam Clerk, at this time, should we give out the information? Is that...
No, that would be the second part of the motion.
That's correct. Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint the...
To add an item to the agenda.
To add an item to the agenda, to appoint the new assessor. And we have a, we have a second, motion second, and we opened up for discussion, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
No.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Merrick Glover?
No.
This item is approved for three.
Madam, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I would like to move to appoint Anthony George, city assessor, with a starting salary of $130,000, beginning with a start date of April 1st, and additional terms to be negotiated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Open, the floor is open for discussion, and Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion. As, Mayor, you are aware and my colleagues are aware, one of our colleagues recently shared some information that our city attorney has agreed to look into. Therefore, until the city attorney has reported her findings back to City Council, I'm moving, I move that we table this motion.
We have a motion, a substitute motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. She has to remove her question.
Council members, you may want to defer it versus table it because of the legal part of taking it off the table. You may want to defer it rather than table it.
I'll amend that to defer.
Until when?
To the next council meetings.
Okay, so that's February the?
The next council meeting or until the city attorney is able to complete her investigation.
February 13th. Okay. Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion, we don't have a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second to defer? And now, the floor is open for discussion?
You can't have two motions on the floor.
Seeing none? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Hugo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Merrick Glover?
Yes.
This item failed by a vote of three to four, and we're back to the original motion of the appointment.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any additional discussion or comments to be made before we call for the vote? Councilman Hugo, so you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I just want to recall some of the accomplishments in the city assessor's office over these past nine or so months. When Mrs. Culpepper was appointed by City Council into the city assessor's office, the city assessor's office was understaffed, and her predecessor had been unsuccessful at filling that understaffing. Ms. Culpepper was successful in finding qualified candidates and brought them aboard and put them into training and has managed over the last nine months to significantly recover the lost ground of incomplete assessments as she briefed us at a work session back before Christmas. Additionally, the KAMA automated system to capture assessor information. The previous assessor had struggled to get that system implemented. That system's now been implemented over these last nine months. And finally, as she walked in, the last year's property assessments had been distributed, and I think across the dais, we heard complaints from our citizens around unexplained changes in the values of the assessments. In every case, when I was confronted with that, I encouraged my neighbors to take their appeals to the city assessor's office. Ms. Culpepper committed to addressing every one of those appeals with either the facts around the change in value or a reinvestigation of the value to correct it if necessary. And so, those accomplishments over these last nine months are important accomplishments, and I, for one, want to thank her for that work and feel that that work warrants that we had considered her to become our permanent city assessor. And therefore, my pending no vote is not aimed at Mr. George, rather, it's aimed at recognizing the good work that our city assessor has done over, the interim city assessor has done over the past nine months. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and to go back a little further, prior to Ms. Culpepper serving as interim assessor, she also was our assessor for approximately six years in the city. And she served the city very well. In fact, her department received some national awards for its operation. And as Councilman Hugo mentioned, her door was always open to any citizen who wanted to come and discuss their particular assessment. And she did an admirable job in smoothing the water on some erroneous assessments last year, as Councilman Hugo mentioned. So, I will, I certainly supported her becoming our city assessor on a permanent basis, and I think she was well deserving of that. She believed in good governance, and she believed in communication, and she believed in fair assessments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor?
Yes, just to correct some of the statements that were made. In regards to the previous assessor, Mr. Doris, as far as the staffing issue, that staffing issue was not corrected under the interim because all of us are aware that Ms. Culpepper presented a proposal for around about $400,000-some dollars for staffing. And so, to say that she corrected the staffing issue would be disingenuous. Also, as far as the KAMA system is concerned, at the last report we received, the KAMA system still has not been fully implemented. And actually, that predates Ms. Culpepper as well as two previous assessors. So, that technology is still not in place. And so, I don't want us to give this false information to the public to sort of glamorize something that really isn't there. And so, we are looking to move forward. The assessed values that many of our citizens were upset about, there were some IT issues that also led to some misassessments other than just human error. And so, I would like us to try to stay on a high ground and not try to demean someone in order to lift another up.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, I would like to say, any individual that serves this city and comes to work in this city, as the mayor, I want to acknowledge their service because it's not always easy to work with seven people. But at the end of the day, when you sign up for the work and you do the best job you can, I think that's all we can ask of anyone. So, I want to thank Ms. Janie Culpepper for her service and her work with the city of Portsmouth, and we all wish her well. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Merrick Glover?
No.
This item is adopted for three.
Now, we do have a need in the interim because our new assessor's start date won't be until April 1st. We do have a need to, if someone could make a motion and second that motion, to add that next step, and then we will vote on the name of that individual. So, we need a motion to add the interim, and then we will name the interim and take that vote as well.
Mayor, I move that we appoint interim city assessor, Mr. Edwards, my current deputy city assessor, with a 10% pay?
We first need to have the motion to add the interim, then we'll take the vote on the interim.
Gotcha. I move that we add an item to add our interim city assessor.
Second.
Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Merrick Glover?
Yes.
And now, Vice Mayor, if you would please?
And Mr. Edwards' first name?
Victor.
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 I move that we appoint interim city assessor, Mr. Victor Edwards, as our interim city assessor with a 10% pay increase.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, before we make our vote on this item, I just want to say that the new city assessor does start April 1st. The reason we're appointing an interim, I did not find out until 10 minutes ago, when we were in closed session, that the employee had been terminated. Counsel was not made aware of that, and so, that's why now we are?
Point of order.
Being, appointing a?
Point of order is on the floor. A point of order is on the floor. What is your, state your point of order, sir?
I think my colleague is in violation of council rules, sharing information that was discussed and closed.
Your point of order is taken, so we will proceed. Your point of order is acknowledged. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, we are appointing an interim because after our council meeting yesterday, the mayor, Mr. Moody, and others called Ms. Culpepper into the office.
Point of order.
And that?
Your point of order, sir. A point of order is on the floor. Please state your point of order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, my colleague is in violation of council rules by discussing items that were discussed and closed.
No, no, no.
Yes.
Let me address that. It may have been this?
We discussed this and closed, and you're out of order.
I saw it in person. I didn't see this in closed session.
Sir, 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 you didn't allow me to address the position first.
I just wanted to give my input before you addressed?
I understand that, but once a point of order is made, we hear the point of order, then we address it. So, to your point, the conversation wasn't a closed conversation, so you can continue, sir.
So, because it occurred in the mayor's office, that was not a closed session. It was improper. Counsel did not direct the mayor nor Mr. Moody nor any other parties to meet, and so, it was very much out of order. We do not know what happened in that meeting, whether there was a forced resignation, termination, firing, we don't know. So, we want the citizens to know, we're doing this because of, I think, improper actions that were taken by members of our council, and in particular, after some very serious allegations were brought to the attention of council by our vice mayor as it relates to conduct that our mayor was involved in directing some actions. And I want to?
Point of order, point of order is acknowledged.
I want to thank the vice mayor for her moral courage.
First of all, point of order is acknowledged. Sir, what is your point of order?
I want to thank her for more.
Sir, you're?
So, my colleague continues to share information that was shared in closed session in violation of council rules.
Right, and that was in closed session, so the point of order is well taken, sir.
That was not in closed session.
Sir, the point of order is well taken. The discussion that was had was?
That information was?
Sir, you are out of order. You are out of order, sir.
I know you don't want to discuss it.
It's not a matter of?
I would like to appeal the mayor's decision.
Some major violations?
Sir, you're out of order.
I move to appeal the mayor's decision.
It's not an appealable situation because he's out of order. He is out of order because, for two reasons, the colleague, Councilman Hugo, presented a point of order. At that point, let me explain how it works.
I know, after you tell?
At that point, all discussion ceases, and he states his point of order. And when he stated his point of order, the discussion that the council member, Dr. Whitaker, was referring to did take place in a closed session. The conversation was held in a closed session. As a result, sir, as a result, the point of order that was put forth is accepted. And so, therefore, if there is something additional which you are inclined to bring to the body or to the citizens, you're welcome to have a conversation, but that part you're out of order on, sir.
The appeal, the appeal by Mr. Tillage, that is, it is not in the mayor's prerogative to interpret. It is for the city attorney to interpret. And so, that's, all of that explanation you just gave is irrelevant.
Call the question.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
I call the question.
Yes, call the question, and who would you like?
Don't we have a motion on the floor? We do. So, call the question. Let's vote.
No, I think the city attorney was asked to comment on the appeal itself because from my understanding, from Robert Rules of Order, when a point of order is granted, you can call an appeal, and that goes to City Council for a vote. But I know my colleague wanted the city attorney to comment on the issue. So, we would, so we understand?
Madam Attorney, would you like to address that concern, please?
The point of order takes precedent. The appeal of the point of order takes precedent. Subsequent to that would be then Councilman Hugo's call for question with respect to the point of order. The reasoning given by the mayor was not conjecture. It was his reason, which is required on a point of order. He gave his reason. It was noted for appeal. Now, the next step is for a motion and a second on that appeal and a vote on the appeal. So, at this point, Mayor, as the chair, you should call for a motion and a second on the appeal. If there isn't already one, it looks like from the clerk, there might already be a motion and a second. And there is discussion and a vote, please.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Is the floor open for discussion at this time? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Now, just so I'm clear, we're voting to approve the appeal, correct?
Voting to, you are voting to overturn the mayor's decision to find a point of order on Dr. Whitaker's statement.
So, yes.
So, a yes?
A yes vote is to overturn.
Mr. Hugo?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Merrick Glover?
No.
This request is approved for three.
The matter is overturned. It is now Councilman Hugo's call for question.
Mr. Mayor, I call the question.
So, the appeal was overturned, so we still have some discussion on that matter?
From Councilman Whitaker, right?
Right.
He can finish, from my understanding, he can finish his?
He should be able to finish his thought.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you're going to recognize the speakers?
You may continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just so that it's done in order and that it's public, I'm going to? I, just so that it's done in order and that it's public, I'm going to yield a public comment to our vice mayor.
Okay, so, so the issue that I brought up, it did occur in closed session, so I will not reiterate that, but that we do have a concern that the matter that I brought before the council in closed session resulted in the city assessor either being terminated or, you know, resigned her position today. And three members of council, obviously, maybe two members of council knew about that, but at least four of members of council did not find out about Ms. Janie Culpepper's departure until we went into closed session. So, that's a concern because of the issue that was raised in the closed session regarding some unethical actions that had occurred over the last 30, 60 days, perhaps. So, there is a concern about the issue that has happened, and we have called for an investigation with our city attorney, and more information will be forthcoming with that. So, that led us into having to appoint an interim city assessor because Ms. Janie Culpepper vacated her position today, which we would been in agreement to allow her to stay on until the permanent city assessor took place on April 1st. So, we have a gap in time, which is why we have appointed an interim city assessor, Mr. Edward, Victor Edwards.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This unfounded allegation that's been used to impugn Ms. Culpepper's integrity was delivered to council by the vice mayor, and, uh, there are people that council did not invite to come into the meeting to, that were at that particular meeting that the vice mayor is referencing, said that what, what she described did not happen. So, hence, there was a consensus last night for the city attorney to investigate the matter. So, what we have here is, uh, a city employee that's performed her duties for the city for a number of years, and her integrity has been drug through the mud by apparently unfounded allegations that four members of this council have used to get, get in place the person that they want to be the assessor. So, that's the truth of the matter. So, I, I can't wait to hear the city attorney's findings on the matter.
Call the question.
Call the question, we, we have, we have a call to question to take the vote. If there, is there, is, on the call to question.
I have one more. I have one more comment since my name was referenced in, in that.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so, so the information was brought to me, y'all know me, I'm not a person who gets to making up stuff just because I want to be talking about it. It came from a very reputable source that was brought to me, and I agree, I agree with everything that Councilman Hugel said about Ms. Janie Culpepper. She's been an upstanding assessor, she, she filled in when we needed someone, when Mr. Dorsey vacated his position, she's done her job, she was here, her door was open, until the thing was put in my ear, and y'all know when something comes in my ear, and it's brought to my desk, I'm going to deal with it right there. So, I brought it to the council, and I don't tell no lies. It was brought to me, and I can't wait for the investigation to come out, because it, it was my understanding that it was also reported to some other members of council the same way.
Call for the question.
Call for the question, we have a call for the question. The, the question has been called, so I think we all need to move forward with this matter. And so, can Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. The item before you is the appointment of Mr. Victor Edwards as interim city assessor with the 10% pay increase.
Second.
Mr., I have a motion in a second, thank you.
You have a motion in a second.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved, seven seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items, I think that, that concludes our business on that front. Are there any other items to be submitted by council at this time?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I have several, and just to conclude, so nothing's hanging, this, this matter is not really about Ms. Culpepper, it's more about you, Mr. Mayor, and some actions that, that you took. I would like.
Sir, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, sir, sir, let me, let me say something to you.
Please do.
As I, as I shared with you, any, any allegations or alleged of wrongdoing by the mayor, any criminal allegation that you want to dream up, I will tell you right now, if you slander or defame my name, in public or otherwise.
You sound good.
You will, you will, you will see the result.
You talk a good game.
You will see the result.
You talk a good, I haven't said anything, I just said it was about some actions, so.
All, all I'm telling you is, if you continue to use my name.
You have the right to do whatever you want to do, I think you've misled.
Defamatory way.
You've misled the people enough.
I will deal with you, sir.
You've misled the people enough.
I will deal with you.
That's why I'm glad the vice mayor is running for mayor.
Yes.
I want to raise to this council attention that we received an email from the city attorney today regarding a request from Ms. Jacqueline Williams. Many of you will remember, she came before council requesting that the surplus from the sale of 602 Warfield Drive, that there was a surplus of $53,020.12. She's an heir to that property, she evidently did not claim it within the claim period, and the city attorney has informed us that council has the authority to pay the $53,020.12. I would like to ask that a consensus be taken that at our next council meeting, since the city attorney has stated that an ordinance needs to be passed in order for the payment to occur, that at the next council meeting, that there be an ordinance to pay Jacqueline S. Williams $53,020.12 as a result of the surplus from the tax sale proceeds of 602 Warfield Drive.
And I would add to that, while, while we're on that topic about the $53,000, as I read the documentation, and Madam City Attorney, if you would clarify, the interest of, of, of the person in question was at 25%, as was the interest of others.
Right, can I, can I ask the city attorney a question based on what you just raised?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure she, she educates us on what that means, because there was a recommendation, there was a recommendation in the, in the document.
Right, I just wanted to ask her a question, and that 25%, that you've mentioned in there that there were four persons, and it seems like it's down to this one person, and that it was under council's discretion, whether we pay her the full amount or that 25%?
Both things are correct. The reason we are suggesting the 25% is so that there is no legal ramification on the city if the other three heirs were to come back seeking that. So, it's vast to do what we have evidence of, which is the 25%.
Okay, okay, I, I thought based on your email that she was the sole.
No.
Now, let me ask you this, if the others do not come forward within a time period, can she?
No, there's, she, they would be sitting similarly situated, just because she had the ability after the, the claim period, and so would they.
Right, so if they don't come forward, then the balance of that?
That would be something I need to research to see, I can't answer that on the fly, so I can follow.
Well, I'd, I'd be willing to adjust it to the recommended 25% until the other part is resolved.
Yes, sir.
But I think the right thing to do is to, is to pay her.
That total would be $13,255.
And I would agree with that, thank you.
All right. The other issue, Mr. Mayor, it involves a car fire that took place on Wednesday, January the 17th, at 12:30, around 12:30, at the corner of Effingham and Lincoln. There's been quite a bit of public outcry, social media posts regarding the situation where a person was severely burned in a car, and the procedures that were taking place and procedures that were followed or were not followed. And I would like for our city manager to give council an update at our, our next public work session in regards to what took place, given the serious injuries of, of the citizen. The next issue involves.
I'm sorry, can I interject, please?
Yes.
May, council, mayor, members of council, can it please be done in a attorney-client privileged report back due to the nature of the information that's going to be provided, so that we can deal with it in an attorney-client privileged environment?
Yes, all right. And the other, the other issue involves the Mount Herman Park, and where are we on the historical designation of Mount Herman Park?
That's Bernard Griffin Park?
Yes.
Okay, that is in a, the application has been filed with the state agency. We are awaiting a review and disposition of that. We don't have a timeframe, but that has been submitted, and we can share the submission
So, what was it, application that was submitted?
It's an application that was submitted, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, and that's with the state?
Mm-hmm, and I, I don't want to call it, it's the Department of.
Historical.
H, I'm, I'm looking over at my, is the Department of? Historic Resources.
Okay, well, I know the, the.
Thank you.
Community of Mount Herman would be glad to know that.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And then, the, the other issue involves the Elizabeth Manor, this is in regards to our city manager. Is it your recommendation that the Elizabeth Manor Golf Course remain in the open space program, considering that the taxes that the city would generate on that property, given how cash-strapped we are, it would be in the neighborhood of $117,000 a year? And right now, because of them being in the open space program, it's down to $3,000 a year for 140 acres of property. Is it, is it the management perspective that that property remain in the open space use, given the significant tax revenue that we are foregoing?
I'm sorry, I'm going to interject just for one minute, Mayor, members of council, can that question be answered in an attorney-client privileged report back? There is a state provision that prohibits council from discussing the taxation of a very specific entity in this manner. So, I think what you're asking is something different from that, and we can reshape that question more appropriately in attorney-client privilege.
Okay, I have no, I have no problems with it, long as we are looking at that, I think I've raised.
As a policy for any further entity, including this one.
Well, I raised the issue at the last council meeting, when you said in your write-up that all legal remedies have been exhausted, and I asked you about equitable remedies, and the equitable remedy would be a non-monetary remedy such as removing them from the program.
It triggers a legal issue, so I'm asking that that discussion be done in attorney-client privileged setting, thank you.
Okay, all right, that's, that's, that's fine, that's fine. And then, the last is the update on where we are on the Sugar Hill Penis Point remediation.
That is a much bigger question, as you know, and we are, we had indicated to you last time that February would be the response date, and that looks like we're on track to, yes, we are on track for a February report back, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you for the time, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
I don't know if it was brought to our attention, well, I think we heard it in one of our meetings before, citizen called me today, and there's a query in the community about former Vice Mayor Charles B. Whitehurst's name being added to a facility, and, and, so if we can get some updates on what's going on with that, is it being handled through Parks and Recreation, or is it a private partnership, something, or what?
Thank you for that, I will provide an update, I'm looking at several options before I contact the family and sit down with them, it was brought to my attention this week, so I'm working on several options that I think they would be very happy with, but I want to make sure I can secure them first. Before I bring it back to council, I just want to make sure that those options are available.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I support anything to recognize Charles Whitehurst, but a few weeks ago, I brought before council a program that we would be able to rename streets on an honorary basis, and where do we stand on feedback on that?
I submitted the information to council in a report back from planning and zoning, so I'll resend it, so you'll have it to look at.
Well, more than the, the verbiage, you know, we've, we've had presentations probably going back a couple of years ago now. Other cities have it, it's, it's, it's not a difficult thing to implement, where instead of going to the expense for residents on the street, you have an honorary designation under the actual street name for the person that you want to honor, and that's, I mean, it's a practice that other cities have had for a number of years, and I don't see why we can't implement something like that.
We have something, so that's what I sent you all to review, so if you want to take it a step further, we already have something in place. But again, during the budget sessions, I can bring it back, so everybody is aware of how it actually works, but I did submit something to council to show we have something in place, but it, maybe I'm.
I think we're talking about two different things, anyway, we'll discuss that after the meeting.
Okay.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last city council meeting, I asked about the plan for the juvenile detention center, Madam Intermanager, she did present to us in a report back, long-term plan, however, I think it's very critical that this council have a work session devoted solely to the plan for the juvenile detention center. This week, I received a few phone calls from people from Richmond, as well as from our local juvenile district in regards to our detention homes, detention situation. And so, if it's the will of council, if we can have at our next work session, a complete brief and discussion, not just a presentation, but a discussion about what we're going to do in the interim until we get to that long-term goal. It is too critical for us not to have something in place, and I expressed my sentiments at the last meeting with conversation that was shared with me with Judge Griffin. So, if it's the will of council, if we can get a consensus for us to, at the next meeting, to have an in-depth conversation, not just a presentation, about how we're going to get to the long-term goal of housing our juvenile inmates.
If I may speak to that, thank you. Just for the public, in case you're not aware, that the city of Portsmouth does not have a juvenile facility for their youth. We used to have, or had a memorandum of understanding with the city of Chesapeake. Some laws have changed as of March 2023, which have increased the number of juveniles in the facilities based on some things, just based on the change of law. So, where Portsmouth is right now in its situation is, we have to, we don't have any local cities who are willing to take our youth. Hampton Roads is not willing to take our youth, so that's not a secret. We've made several calls, we've reached out if, to other localities, and so, right now, our juveniles are being transported to outside localities, outside of, or further, further stretch in Virginia. We have had to have memorandums of understanding for guaranteed space and beds for our kids. As you watch the news, you have seen an uptick or increase in juvenile crime violations. So, with everything that's happening with the uptick in what we consider crime committed by youth, we've had to transport the children further and further out, which causes the issue with the families for several. issue with the families for several reasons and other things. One, they can't see their kids because most of the parents either don't have the transportation. Two, they're so far out, the lawyers are struggling to get with the, to be able to meet with them to talk about their cases. So there, there are a lot of dynamics surrounding this. Currently, the courts have a budget, but that cost has increased because of additional transport that we've had to do. And so where we are now is we're in the process of securing a facility, but that won't happen until the next fiscal year. Currently, it costs $180,000 per youth, per bed, I won't say per youth, per bed, if you're looking at building a facility. There is not a short term for us to be able to build a facility because, again, when you have to house these, our, our children, our youth, you have to have a school, you have to have, it has to have education, you have to have a facility, you have to have teachers, you have to have bed space, there are a lot of things outside of a one fix. That's not what we have here. You have to have mental health. There are a lot of things that surround what is required to build and house a facility. Right now, the city of Portsmouth, in the short term, does not have an opportunity to say, I want that building and I'm going to convert it into a youth facility. That's not possible because right now, we're trying to secure a facility that will be able to address all of our needs. So for the short term, we're increasing the budget for the transport of our youth and to guarantee or acquire additional bed space for our youth. What I am asking council to do, and I provided all of this through a report back, is to first allow us to get, secure a facility so that our kids can be close to home. Second, there is no immediate fix because that's not possible. To modify a building would cost just as much as to build one. So we're already in that process of securing something for the near future. What I ask or what I let you know is, a lot of you may not have even known that, that our kids, we don't, maybe, I, I don't think a lot of people understood, they all thought that Chesapeake was a regional facility. Chesapeake is not a regional facility. But because of the uptick, they can't even hold their capacity steady for their children. So an immediate response would be to assist the courts in the transportation and the housing of the youth that we have. What you consider long-term, I don't consider a year out as long-term because we have already requested from the state licensure to be able to house and do that here. But again, these things take time. Short-term, we're increasing the budget so they can continue to transport our youth. Short-term, we're in the process of securing a facility. Long-term, we will have a youth, juvenile facility, detention facility for our kids in-home in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, mayor. My question was for us to have a conversation in a work session about this. Once again, this information is being presented to us where council's not able to have input. I've requested this a couple of times. When Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke and myself met with Judge Griffin back in the early part of December, or late part of November, the police chief and the director of behavioral healthcare were there in the, in the role for the city manager. And so in that meeting, Judge Griffin expressed many different options that we could talk about on how we can get to that long-term goal. In addition to that, she says she would be willing to talk with council. And so my question is not just about being told or being presented, it's about us having a conversation in a work session. And so with that being said, I would like to call for that consensus for us to have that conversation because at the end of the day, it's not the court's responsibility, it's not the sheriff's responsibility, it's not the police department's responsibility, it is the responsibility of the city. And I do believe a conversation was had a couple of weeks ago with the city manager about that, about it being the city's responsibility. And so if it's the will of council, if we can have that conversation at the next work session, so we can get this ball rolling, I would like to call for that consensus, mayor. You have to ask the question.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Anybody want to ask any questions?
You have to ask for the consensus, sir. That's the question. The question is, can we have at the next meeting, a work session to discuss in detail the interim plan until we get to the end goal for the juvenile detention center and to have, reach out to Judge Griffin or a representative to be present in that meeting so that we can discuss the safety and the well-being of our juvenile inmates?
Sir, I, I think I understood the question. I just wanted to make sure that there were no other folks that want, that have something to say before I ask for the consensus. I think that was proper in an order. So thank you for-
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your, your candor.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I, I am in favor of having the discussion because it was pretty much in the meeting a mandate on us as Portsmouth to do something about the situation. And Judge Griffin was adamant about it being our, our issue to handle. She made some recommendations. We even had a follow-up email about, you know, what are going to be our actions. And so I believe it may be another meeting coming up. And I understand that we're in the middle of budget season, but this is important enough, maybe we need a special call meeting so that we can handle this and, and have the discussion so that we can move forward with that.
I, I do have a question and, and I'm going to call for the consensus, but I have a question because I, I know I've had a conversation with Judge Griffin personally about this as well. And my question is simply this, is if, if, if what the manager just explained to us or expressed to us in the short term, what, what, what is the end result that we are trying to come to in terms of moving forward? I, I just have that question because I know that what the judge has conveyed and I know that there's not any space, there's not going to be any space in the short term. I know that the state has certain parameters and things you have to do in order to be certified to be that type of facility. So I'm just kind of, i- is Judge Griffin coming in to talk with us, is that going to move, where do we want to go at the end of the day?
Well, I think that allows the conversation to be had. Council's yet to have a conversation about this. We're being talked to. And so how can we even talk about what the end goals can be if we're not having conversation? So the purpose of this work session is to have conversation so that we can find the solutions and work towards it instead of being talked at.
Well, I, I think that's a, that's a valid point, but I can honestly say that yourself, you've heard from the judge, Vice Mayor has heard from the judge, I've heard from the judge. So we, we have been talked to by the judge. Not everyone in council perhaps has had a conversation with the judge. But if it is your pleasure that, and, and it is council's pleasure that the judge come and talk to the other four members and we get an understanding from the judge's perspective, I see no issue with that.
Most definitely. And I think not only is it, it's not just about having the judge talk to us, it's about us make, make, about us taking action. At the end of the day, council is the one that gives directives to appointees and we, we're the one that move the, move the city in that direction. And so it's not just about us listening to the judge, but it's about us acting on what the judge recommends, number one, but also us having that discussion on how we're going to get to that point.
Very good. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Mayor, from looking at this list, we have a lot of speakers that want to talk tonight about some real important issues and I'm eager to hear what they have to say. So I'm suggesting and asking, can we just move on?
Sir, that is a recommendation I think we all can agree with. Let's, 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 as the request from my colleague, Councilman Tillage, I will call for a consensus by show of hands to have the judge come talk to us. So we'll have the judge come talk to us and we'll see what the next steps perhaps could be, sir.
It was that simple, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Hugo, and then we'll move forward, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So over the last couple of weeks, we've had shootings associated with two short-term rental facilities. And currently, we have no regulations on the book to manage how short-term rentals are handled. I shared with my colleagues and also with the city manager, the Airbnb local legislative toolkit, they've suggested some things that communities should consider in the way of putting regulation in place that not only informs us who is hosting short-term rentals, but also addresses the safety and security of short-term rentals, including re-emphasizing their policy that they don't allow party houses and parties to happen at, at, at their short-term rental houses. I know the city manager is outgathering information to, to have a discussion with us about putting some regulations, some, an ordinance in place to manage short-term rentals. If it's agreed to by my colleagues, I'd like to ask the city manager to, to get a draft ordinance put together with the city attorney's help so that we can finally address regulating short-term rentals in Portsmouth.
Councilman Barnes?
So before we draft the ordinance for Airbnbs, I, I think that need to be a broader discussion tomorrow's council because most, so to your point, there was a shooting, most likely it was a party is what we heard. But most Airbnbs don't allow you to have parties and there's a certain amount of people that, that they allow in the, in the Airbnb. Citizens or people who rent Airbnbs sometimes don't follow the rules. And I think it's a slippery slope that we, we put certain stipulations on things to stop people from making their money. And we have a casino with no hotel, so you need those Airbnbs to, to help you with people coming here. And you don't want to discourage people from wanting to do an Airbnb. I know, I, I rent Airbnbs often with my basketball team that I take out of town. And from looking at the rules, it, it'll tell you, no parties allowed, no people allowed after a certain time. But a person that is actually running an Airbnb can't, can't really stop that. So we, we just, we, we just got to make sure that we're careful with, with certain stipulations. So before, I don't, I don't think we should go to drafting an ordinance right now. I think that we need to have a, a serious discussion about this issue, if we're going to put some policies into place, what, what we're going to do with it and, and things of that nature. I, I just don't think this is one of those things where we say, hey, city manager and city attorney, y'all come with something back to us. This is something that we really need to discuss because there, there's a lot of things. If, if you just go to the site and type in Portsmouth, you can find out where some of the Airbnbs and you can see the rules. I'm sure whoever had that Airbnb with that person, with that issue happened with, I'm pretty sure that they did not have in there, you can have parties. I'm pretty sure it says, most Airbnbs, probably 99% of them say, you can't have parties. That was on the people that actually rented the space. And I, I seen that house. It's, it's, I know for a fact, they, they said there were no parties. Their house is not big enough, it's only a couple of rooms. And just to be honest, they don't even allow you to have people who are not staying in the Airbnb to, to be there after a certain time and you have quiet hours. I'm pretty sure that was the quiet hours when that incident occurred.
Thank, thank you, sir, for that thoughtful, thoughtful delivery. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor, then Councilman Hugo.
Well, I, I agree with Councilman Hugo. I think definitely there needs to be some regulations. You can't tell that to the people on Fairwood Drive that had automatic weapons fired in their quiet neighborhood and had to deal with bullet, bullet holes in vehicles.
I think the same for the people out in the rooms and all those places, too.
And, you know, it's nothing against Airbnb. It's an industry, we, we're not going to abolish it, but it needs to be regulated. And I dare say that when you rent an Airbnb, the, the owner may not know, in fact, the owner may not even be in the city of Portsmouth or in the state of Virginia. So what they're interested in is the revenue they get from it, but we, we don't need additional violence in any of our communities. And so I think that's a discussion. I'm all for discuss, discussing the issue, but I think staff needs to see what other localities are doing in the region as far as regulations and bring back some suggestions on how we can at least get control so these parties and these gun shootings aren't being held in these Airbnb rentals. I think that's, I think that's a fair suggestion.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Hugo, sir, you, I think you wanted the floor, then?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just to be clear, I'm not trying to discourage Airbnbs or short-term rentals. That's not the point of putting ordinance in place. As Councilman Moody said, it's simply to put some regulation in place. The reason that I shared the Airbnb toolkit is because they have gathered lessons learned from a lot of communities like ours and come up with kind of a collection of best practices for what an ordinance would look like that would allow short-term rentals to occur, but provide for tax reporting, provide for safety and security, collaboration between the, the Airbnb owners and the local police, things like that. And so I think the collection of ideas that are in that toolkit will help us write some policy that, that makes sense for the Airbnb owners, but also for, for the benefit of, of our city.
Councilman Barnes?
So, I mean, we don't have any current policy, so I'm not against that. I'm just saying that we shouldn't rush to let them decide it. I think that's something that council needs to be decided. And just to, to Councilman Moody's point about what happened on, on Fairway, it's happening every day out Dales Home, Prentice Park, South Side and neighborhoods like that. I think we need to be focusing more on that than we focusing on this incident that happened in this neighborhood one time. It's happening every single day in neighborhoods that a lot of these people come from, where I come from.
Excuse me, sir, ladies and gentlemen, we, we need to refrain from the public outbursts. Let the councilman please finish his, his thought. Thank you.
So for me, that's what I'm more concerned about right now. That, that issue, that issue did happen and it's, it's part of the broader crime issue that we have in this city because that wasn't an Airbnb issue, that was a crime issue in the city of Portsmouth. So that's what we need to focus on. Even if that Airbnb wasn't there, that still would have happened. It literally still would have happened. So that's what we need to focus on more than focusing on that particular issue because it happened in that neighborhood. I'm kind of appalled that it was, it was put out there because it was that neighborhood. I've actually never heard the comment. I'm, I'm sure the people out Dales Home would say it different. I'm sure the Prentice Park say it different. That's, that's what I'm concerned of, the broader issue. I had a shooting out my neighborhood, I live in a pretty good neighborhood. I didn't, I didn't come in, in the meeting and, and say, we need to deal with crime in my neighborhood, we need to deal with crime overall in the city of Portsmouth.
Well, sir, I think, I think that listening to the discussion, it, it, would it be appropriate to ask our management team, our manager and our attorney to get together and look at some options to bring before us and have a conversation so that we can come to some type of conclusions? I think that, that could be an appropriate ask. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, so, madam, madam city attorney and madam manager, are you okay with bringing back some, some ideas for us to discuss and have this conversation and how we can proceed forward in terms of providing common sense regulations and opportunities for these, these organizations to be in business, but to, to, to have some guidelines to abide by? Okay. Okay, so we'll get some update onto that, and we'll have a work session, perhaps more discussion on this item.
I do need to ask a question, though. As part of this, as we look at options, is counsel against me presenting an option that will require them to receive a license for a short-term period of time? And that way, those Airbnbs will be identified in the neighborhood? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And are there any other items to be submitted by council? I do have one item. I do want to recognize the Virginia Symphony Orchestra for their tribute to the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday. They had a wonderful symphony program at IC Norcombe High School on Sunday. In fact, Dr. Andrea Warren, who is the president of the symphony, and her husband were in attendance. And I must say that our very own, our very own Dr. Darlene Sparks Washington with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless was recognized for her work in the community and was presented with the Dreamer Award. So if you see Dr. Darlene Sparks Washington, please congratulate her and her team for what they do to help the homeless in the city of Portsmouth. Thank you. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Your comments triggered a thought of mine. I think the Virginia Symphony event was amazing. They did a great, a great job. At the last council meeting, I asked in regards to policy recommendations, in regards to sponsorships. I was made aware that Portsmouth City was a sponsor of this event for, I believe it was $25,000. And so if we can have a report back on how we make these decisions, I think Councilman Bill Moody asked for that back in August of 2023. It's now been seven, well, six months later, almost six months later, and we don't have an answer yet. But if we can please have a recommendation, I mean, an outline of how criteria is put forth for sponsorships in addition to recommendations on how we're going to move forward with sponsorships. I do believe that when the conversation was brought up a couple of months ago in regards to the Black Tie Gala, I do know that excuses were created that involved a member of council, and in that meeting, it was determined that those allegations were false. And so if we can please have criteria put forth on, once again, how sponsorships are given and how we will be giving sponsorships in the future. I spoke with the city attorney about some policies and things that are already on the books concerning appropriations expenditures, as well as discretionary funds that are actually quoted in our state, I mean, excuse me, in our city code, as well as in our budget. And according to the information that I did provide her, it is stated in our budget that discretionary funds are not, should not be common practice in the city of Portsmouth. And so if we can please get some information from the city attorney regarding that, but also in addition to the sponsorship, I think that would be very crucial for us to have, considering it's now been six months and money is still being given out without council knowing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're moving.
Yeah, I just want to say.
Go ahead.
The interim city manager did provide me with a draft sponsorship policy. We are, and we, I mean, Madam Clerk, myself, and the interim city manager are working on a global policy that you all also asked for. It seemed fitting that those policies be together, and so we are working on. So we have a number of things that you all presented us with, so we're working through that. And lastly, I was under the impression we were going to have that February 17th retreat, but we're not, so I was going to save the analysis of the information you shared with me for that, but we can incorporate that into this report as well. So it's in the works and it's coming.
Communication is key. And so I do appreciate that.
Team effort, for sure.
Considering it's been six months. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are there any other pending items that we need to discuss at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in an belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Madam Clerk, and our first speaker for the evening is Joyce Brown. Joyce, if you're here, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Joyce Brown, 605 Portsmouth, Virginia, 605, 7th Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. My son, Lamont Brown.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, could you please come to the microphone? No, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Take your time, please.
Okay.
We know you're a little nervous. It's okay.
Yes. My son, Lamont Brown, he was murdered September 25th, 2022, and the city of Portsmouth have done nothing to help me solve his crime. He was gunned down by multiple people, gang members, and Detective Jackson, and there's been three different Commonwealth, and nobody gave me no help. Nobody answered, no phones. Nobody done nothing. Another guy was shot, Ernest Pierce, just because he's afraid to testify. Oh, who done it? They said there is nothing they could do about my son being shot down all them time, gunned down, out there on Carver Circle in the city of Portsmouth. And I just want somebody to help me get some kind of justice for my child. And I've been begging and calling people, and nobody's helping me. And I just want somebody to give some, he was shot down so many times, so many bullets in his body, and the whole gang, and I have to, gave Detective Jackson pictures of the people that they sent, the streets talk of Mad Max, who's a gunman. There was a gun, what's the boy's name? Avis People, he was a gunman. His car was there at the scene with two guns, clouts or gouts, whatever the name of the things are, with masses, just because he had money to pay a lawyer, and he's back on the street and gunning down more people since then. And I'm still begging for help for my child today. And I just heard from the Commonwealth that they gave me, which they gave me three, one went, they gave me one. He, no, the first time he went to court, he didn't ever show up, and they said they had to get Commonwealth from Norfolk for something, I don't know. And then there was somebody named, first it was Mr. Jenkins, then he moved up to another higher job. He never got in contact with us, with me, period. And then Mr. Clemento, he came up, and I just heard from him this year for the first time since we went to court, and he said there's nothing he could do because Ernest Pierce won't say anything. So I'm just standing here with nothing, nobody helping me but my son. And he was gunned down, shot by gangs of people, all them bullets out there, 100 bullets in the street, and 100 bullets all over my son's body. And ain't nobody done nothing in the city of Portsmouth. And I've been begging for help for a long, long time. I done been to the detective office, I done been everywhere, now I'm here. And I want justice for my son, Lamont Dante Brown. And I hoping and begging, hoping and begging, y'all, please help me. And I thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. We're so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Can we get somebody to talk to her so we can look into this issue?
So I'm the chief, and then we have the assistant chief here this evening, but I'll follow up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Nicole Park. Ms. Park, you will come forward, state your name and address, ma'am. You will have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, my name is Nikki Park. I live at 123 Crawford Parkway. I am here representing the Portsmouth-based nonprofit, Your Wellness, Inc. According to the World, sorry, excuse me, I'm a little nervous myself.
Take your time, ma'am.
I'm here to request your support for a suicide prevention initiative in Portsmouth. According to the World Health Organization, more than 700,000 people die due to suicide every year. Worldwide, suicide is the fourth-leading cause of death in 15- to 29-year-olds. In 2021, 48,183 Americans died by suicide. In that same year, there was an estimated 1.7 million suicide attempts. On December 10th, 19-year-old Daquan Rowntree from Portsmouth went missing after expressing a desire to end his life. His body was found on January 9th. Just last week, a 14-year-old girl from Portsmouth with an extremely bright future and whom I personally knew ended her life with a firearm. In spite of these grim facts and figures, 94% of adults in the U.S. believe that suicide can be prevented. Your Wellness, Inc., a Portsmouth-based nonprofit, stands firmly with that hopeful 94%. Deborah Harris, would you please stand, Deborah? Deborah founded Your Wellness, Inc. in 2019 with the mission to decrease the number of suicide and opioid deaths in youth and adults of all ages in Hampton Roads. Mrs. Harris is a certified peer recovery specialist with years of experience in the mental health profession. She is a published author, mental health advocate, emotion regulation life coach, and skill-building life coach. Your Wellness, Inc., in partnership with St. Andrews Lutheran Church of Portsmouth, is launching a 12-week-long suicide prevention boot camp on February 5th. Our goal is to help troubled individuals build strengths and develop skills to grow, heal, and recover through a holistic approach. Our suicide prevention boot camp is organized around an evidence-based program called Wellness, Recovery, and Action Planning, also known by the acronym RAP. RAP is a peer-led wellness recovery process promoting mental well-being and has been used since 1997 by people around the world. It is both self-directed and highly customizable to the individual. A National Institutes of Health study involving 519 participants with severe and persistent mental illness demonstrated that after participating in an eight-week-long RAP program, participants experienced less psychiatric symptoms, increased hopefulness, and enhanced quality of life. Through learned self-management techniques, the RAP program graduates reported reduced need for and use of formal mental health services over time. With the current shortages in access to psychiatric services, Your Wellness, Inc.'s Suicide Prevention Boot Camp can fill in some of those gaps. According to the National Institutes of Health, the rates of death by suicide have been increasing among virtually all demographic groups over the past 20 years. However, in a study conducted from 1999 to 2020, there was more than a doubling of the suicide rates among black females in the age range of 15 to 24. Black men are as likely as anyone else to have mental illness, but they are less likely to get help. Untreated mental health can also make black men more vulnerable to substance abuse, homelessness, incarceration, homicide, and of course, suicide. Suicide is truly a public health crisis, and preventing suicide must become not only a national priority, but a local one. I'm here today requesting support for suicide prevention initiatives like Your Wellness, Inc.'s Suicide Prevention Boot Camp and other mental health, evidence-based, mental health treatment programs in order to promote a healthier and happier Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Sherman Tyler. Mr. Tyler, if you would come forward and state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Sherman Tyler, 1812 Parker Avenue. Are we really in here talking about Airbnb? When this lady, my friend, raised up with her kids, good boys, are we talking about an Airbnb when this woman just sit here and said her son's body took over 100 bullets? I didn't hear nobody say nothing about Dale's Home, claimed nine lives last year. South Side claimed five lives last year. Portsmouth had 40 deaths, the highest that we ever had in 250 years. Nobody talking about changing the rules in Dale's Home? Why Dale's Home still even there? Why's Dale's Home still, that park have claimed nine, seven lives last year? Why haven't we knocked Dale's Home down like we did the old Lincoln Park? And we ought to good, we ought to bad and keep the good. And we discussing Airbnb, a one incident shooting, and we got over 100 and some deaths in the last four years that y'all been on this bench? That man, what's his name, Cedric, coming here, he ain't been here in a while, he was reading over 100 and some deaths in the last four year of y'all watch. And we talking about the stupidest stuff up here. You know, what are we, what are we going to do about this killing this year? What we going to do about Dale's Home this year? About this gang? About this mama like her that had to come here and beg y'all because her son got killed in 2022? And she haven't heard anything from nobody? And we sit here and talking about Airbnb and about some old crazy dumbass that don't even make sense? And the dies, it's look like me. And if the head messed up, what are we going to do, man? Y'all battle up here over the stupidest mess. Y'all battle and war over the stupidest mess. In the meantime, people like her is suffering every day. You got people out Dale's Home that done called y'all, I know, about the roaches, about the rats, about the murders, and ain't nothing being done. We talking about call, talking about putting the rules on an Airbnb, and we got a girl out Dale's Home going in her car and got gunned down last year. Didn't bother nobody. Tillage, our mild guys like you. Our mild guys like you. Barnes, our mild guys like you. Whitaker, we need you on this dance. People like me don't have a chance, but people like you, if you not on that dance, we don't have a chance. We don't. And I get what you're doing about Sugar Hill. Every time you bring it up, your own people kick it down. How you kick something down to uplift your own race? That people, what property was taken? I know some of them. One of my friends just got killed in January. They're from Sugar Hill. Who did the city have took their property? Every time that man bring it up, y'all find a reason to shut that man down. But you look like me, though. And y'all allow these people to insult our intelligence by talking about the dumbest mess. Nobody said nothing about Dale's Home. Nobody said nothing about the 40 murders that we got last year, breaking an old-time high. We broke the barrier last year with bodies. And we sitting back and we giving keys to the city? And we sitting back and we giving keys to the city? We naming streets after people? We bringing in TD Jakes with blood on our hands? We gave Missy Elliott a big, a big celebration with blood in our streets? We gave keys to the city with blood on our feet? We in front of the casino, pause like a, like a, like a big deal, and all, and we was dying. On y'all watch. On y'all watch. And then y'all gonna insult the black people? That, that what you doing? Because I had nobody, never addressed all, all our killing last year. How women go into their cars and getting ambushed, go into the car in broad daylight? But you wanna call Airbnb and make rules because, because somebody shot in a white community? We live this mess every day, man. We live it every day of our life.
Thank you sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tyler, for your, your passion. We do get our passion when we can to address some issues. For one, I had the same concern that you did about Dale's Home, and I spoke with the Director of the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, and it was told to me that there was some contract that was done for Dale's Home through HUD where we can't even touch it for another 20-some years. Right, 15 now. So I think it's somewhere around 2030, somewhere where we can even look at that. But it should have been torn down right with Lincoln Park, redeveloped into something that was more upstanding for our community. So I do agree with you on that. We have put in place a crime commission, and I guess we need to know where we are with that. We have had some citizens to apply. We did get one more recommendation that we needed for a person from the Civic League before we can push that commission forward. And I hope that some of you have applied, just like with all of our boards and commissions, because they need to hear from you. Some people who know the streets, some people who have lived it, some people who have walked it, some people who really understand. And it's not something that's just tangible because it's something that happened in Churchill and or on the other side of the bridge, and then we want to make rules about it when we have things that are happening on the south side or the other side of the tracks every day, and then nothing is said. So we are looking into those things. And lastly, our Chief of Police is having a forum on the 30th, and it'll be at the Old Sports Hall of Fame. That's where the, the police office is. And I, the time is, I believe, 6 o'clock. So if you want to go there, there is an open forum where our chief is, is open and, and to hearing your ideas and take that same passion when you go, because he will listen, and some things can begin to get done. So thank you for coming out tonight.
Councilman Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I, I am excited about the, the crime commission, but I know that's just something that, that's gonna be a part of the solution. One of the biggest solutions and one of the things that we have to do on council is be a part of the solution as well. I know, I did ask, maybe, maybe about two months ago. I wanted to, to see if we can get our departments together and, and figure out how we address the crime issue as a, as a whole, and each department come out with a particular plan and what they are doing and, and what they can do to deal with the crime issue, because it's, it's economic development, it's pox and rat, it's, it's bright, blighted houses, so includes planning. So it's all these things that we, we have to address. So one, I wanted to, to see if we can get that update regarding that. Ms. Terry, maybe by the next meeting? And, and also to Ms. Brown, this won't help bring him back, but as you know, I knew Lamont, and when I was younger out there homes, I wanted to get into some trouble. And Lamont came to me and said, nah, man, you going to school, you doing your thing, letting you do that. So he was one of the people who kept me out of trouble. So I just wanted to let you know that story. I'm very familiar with your family. When the situation happy, happened, I reached out to members of your family and, and asked them, how can I help? For me, this is important. This is an important issue. I've, I've been pushing for, talking about it for a lot of time, a lot of years, because I know a lot of the people who are involved in these incidents. I lost a 12-year-old cousin to gun violence. So thi- this is an important issue to me, but I wanted to share that story with you because he's somebody who's important to me because he helped me get to where I'm at right now by keeping me out of trouble, by not, not letting me do what I wanted to do.
City Manager, Ms. Terry, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that part, the, the chief actually presented a plan last week, and it was Portsmouth United, and the departments are part of the Portsmouth United. And all of that is tied into that with some additional stabilization programs that we're looking into putting in place. Also, I would encourage the citizens who are interested in joining the commission to work with the chief on that, because that's what the chief does as part of crime prevention. But there, he did give a presentation. He will probably speak to it again while we're in our budget sessions because we're gonna have to fund some of these programs. And he, that is, the departments are part of the crime plan that we have, but as far as the Portsmouth United. So we've incorporated that, because that was your request. We've incorporated that, so.
And, and I'm glad to hear about that, but, but also, I ask too, and, and this, this part is on council, not too much to you. And to go to with the police department, I know that the police department plays a huge role into crime. But the truth is, is we can't arrest our way out of crime. So we gotta make sure that we put policies in play to prevent people from being involved in crime. Always say, when a crime happens today, when somebody's killed, when somebody go to jail, the issue didn't start that day. It started when they was able to choose that lifestyle. So we gotta stop them from choosing that lifestyle. But it's also important that, because with all the department heads, and, and we have to get their part, but we also have to hear what council would like to see from those departments as well. Because I wanted council to be included in that process, because ultimately, when something happens, they're not calling the department head. They're calling the seven members of council. So you, you actually have people that's up here that understand some of the issues that's going on in the community, that you, you got one person who may have participated in some of the things in the past that went on in the community, so that can help you with putting stuff together of why people do certain things, why certain things happen. So I just don't want us to exclude certain expert advice that we have on this council that can be a part of the process and making it better so that we can really deal with this crime issue. Because I, I don't wanna continue to hear about this from citizens, not because I don't wanna hear their issues, but I'm tired of just losing people in general. So that's why I don't wanna hear about it anymore. I know we can't erase crime altogether, but we can put a, a dent in it, and that's the biggest thing for me. I'm tired of people that I know continuing to, to die. I mean, and I'm sure everybody has people that they know in this particular situation, because the Brown family lost more than one person in that same year. So, you know, that's, that's why that's, that's important to me. So hopefully that we can, we can be, well, we need to be a part of that process as well, because no shade at all, but we wasn't united in that process to, to talk about the issue. So I don't feel like it's a Portsmouth United thing if council wasn't involved in it. But what I'm saying is, is that we gotta, council has to sit down and talk about what we want. That was more what you talking about, was a, was him talking, as talking at people. Council itself needs to come together and, and develop something in general so that we can deal with this issue. Again, when, I don't do, none of them call Pox and Rat Department, planning, when did somebody get killed? They call us, right? So that's why we have to play a part in it. And some people may not know, but once we all get together as a council, we can talk about those issues so people can have a better understanding. Me and Councilman Hugo was in Atlanta talking about some issues of why crime exists, and he didn't know, and he has a better understanding of it. So that, that's what I'm saying. That's my only thing. We, we wanna be a part of the process, because you said the departments have it, but we want, we, we wanna see certain things that we wanna see a part of that department's crime plan too. And that's what I was just saying, when I, when I had mentioned it.
Thank you, sir. Our, our next speaker is Cheryl Bryant. Come forward, state your name and address, ma'am. You will have five minutes.
My name is Cheryl Bryant, and I'm a resident in Portsmouth. How you guys doing?
Good.
Okay, I, I would like to say this is my personal opinion. You guys put more energy into fussing at each other about your personals, um, issues than you do in the community. As far as the Juvenile Center, I do wanna say this. Did you guys know that y'all needed better redevelopment in housing in a juvenile center before that casino was built? You didn't know that? That's a question. For anybody to wanna answer it.
Well, so, so for me, I was, I'm a person who didn't vote for the, the permit for the casino, and I had my reasons why. Ultimately, though, we do need businesses in the city, and we need them to generate income from the city. And with that being said, the casino itself, a lot of people think that the, the city council or the city built the casino, a private company built the casino. And, and I say that because if you wanted to do a business, I don't want a situation come up. Let's say you wanted to do a daycare, and we say, well, we got, we got issues.
Can you stop my time while he's talking? Because I'm not gonna get to what I.
Ma'am, 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 hold on, hold on. Here's, here's, here's what, here's, here's, here's how we gonna handle this. You have five minutes. You're up here to talk. If you have a question after you complete your five minutes, then we can entertain a question. But, but this is not a question and answer, period.
Okay, I just didn't know how.
I just wanna be clear so you understand and everybody comes after you. You are here to state what you came to state to council. We are here to listen. This is not an interactive process. You can ask a question, but as a non-agenda speaker, you sign up to come and state your business that you want council to hear, and then we move forward.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if I came up here to talk, and you know, he's taking up some of my time, can you just call the time?
Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Okay, well, thank you.
And once your five minutes is up, that's what it is.
Oh, you done talked.
If you wanna relinquish your time, you're welcome to do that.
No, it's fine.
But it's, it can't be a back and forth. You have five minutes, as will everyone else.
The whole point of a, a meeting is to ask questions and get answers, because like she said, nobody answers the phone.
Yes, he's, he's welcome to talk to you, but you come up as a non-agenda speaker. That's, that's the rules, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So what is the process? A year and a half ago, 18 months, I came up here before a city ordinance request for the C code 22-8331. What is the status on that? Because I haven't heard from nobody in 18 months.
I think that was assigned to the city attorney's office. We can follow up with you afterwards. I believe we tried to reach out to you, but we can follow up and I can talk with you about that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, I came to you guys over a year ago. I have an organization, Motivational Place, and a lot of this stuff that's going on in the city would have been resolved if you guys would have just picked up the phone and returned my phone calls. Okay, within Motivational Place, I have put together a group, and it's called Mindset Supporters. Mindset Supporters would be a great opportunity and asset to the city of Portsmouth. Mindset Supporters relate to all contexts of education, informative information, teachings, enhance of knowledge of cultures. It always, it also will bring awareness to your inner self and is needed for the community. The program would be a great fit and goals for the city of Portsmouth. The world is changing every day along with negative influence on social media. Mindset Supporters is definitely a neat, needed program. The target age is kindergarten and up, the teenage adults and older, because some, you know, adults lacked some things growing up. And what you lacking your childhood, it affects your adulthood. Regardless of any age, the program would be beneficial to anyone. And in today's society, people that struggles with bullying, mental health, lack of love, self-love, emotional issues, physical issues, a lack of support, and et cetera. Mindset Supporters' mission is to help improve communication skills, verbal or non-verbal, develop and enhance common sense, which is not common anymore, comprehensive of all emotions, because I feel if you know all of your emotions is more than one or two, you'll know how to address certain situations when they come about. And it also teaches how to handle real-life situations in an effective way, knowing and understanding self-value and self-worth, knowing and understanding the importance of life, the outcome. To develop of common sense, increase self-esteem, confidence, help build good characters or healthy relationships, and how to analyze situations and handle them in a productive manner, and et cetera. So what do you guys think about it? Do you think that's something that you would be interested in? And that's just the.
Ma'am, ma'am, once again, this is not a question and answer. I, I asked you to state while you were speaking, state your purpose and what you came to speak about.
There is a lot of stuff.
You, you're welcome to stay behind after the meeting and ask the questions of any council member whom you would like to talk to. But this is not a question and answer, period. We have other people who have signed up to speak, and they have waited patiently.
Okay, well, I appreciate you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You be blessed.
You be blessed as well.
Okay, I do wanna say one more thing. You can slick a can of oil, but you can't slick God.
Amen. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio O'Neal. If you would come forward, sir, and state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. Happy New Year. My name is Sergio O'Neal. I reside here in the city of Portsmouth, 1420 Elm Avenue, right in Prentice Park, Crime Central. You know, and I call it that, but I, I can say this, the efforts that have been going on in Prentice Park, I applaud what's been, what's, what's been happening, because I live it every day. See, I don't just get the phone call. I don't get the, somebody sending me a text about what happened. I get to see it every day when I go home. So, you know, because I live there, you know. I live there by choice, not by force. I live there because that's, you know, it's my community. I was born and raised out of Boston. I've lived all over this city. So it don't faze me to live in Prentice Park. And when I'm, when I talk about it, it's not because of what somebody told me, it's because of what I see every day. Just like with Dale's Homes, it's not about what somebody told me. I have three nephews that live in Dale's Homes every day. And trust me, before, before you think they calling, they calling me to let me know what's going on. And I, then I, or before they even call me, I get to see. The young man that was killed in that shooting in that house, my nephew's brother was best friends with him. And I, I don't, you know, you can't make it up when you have to explain to another 15-year-old how this process works. That if somebody doesn't say something, it's gonna keep happening. And you can't give them an answer as to when it's gonna stop. See, a lot of times we spin these circles like, oh, we do so much, we know so much, we see so much. But I'm not playing no games. I'm so serious. So you could spin it as to say, oh, well, I'm doing this and I'm doing that. And some of us used to contribute to the problems. Some of us still are. But see, y'all play this game with other people that, that may not know no better. See, Sergio wasn't born last night. I know better. You can't fool me. So play that game with somebody that don't know no better, and it's all good, but I'm the wrong one to play that with. Because see, one thing I can assure you is that this is an, I know election time is coming, and I know everybody gonna be shined up and polished. But we gonna know the bull crap when they hit the door. Trust me when I tell you. We, we tired of some of y'all. We, we tired of some of y'all. Some of y'all need, I wish y'all seat was up right now. For real. Seriously. So serious. Because see, y'all played it and then you get one that's swinging his pendulum. I'm going to tell you right now, brother, you better watch that line because soon as you piss them off, you're going to be just like what it about, out of here. So don't get too comfortable with your compadre, or your compadres, I should say, because they ain't go, they going to hold you with so much. Long as you voting with them, they going to be just fine. Soon as you do something to swing that line, it's over for you, brother. And I'm telling from what, what we know, not what somebody made up. Ask them about it. So I'm just letting y'all know. Then the other thing is, here too, while I'm up here, you know, the positive side of while I'm up here, because I, I, I'm not going into crime and all that. You know, if I wanted that report, I could go down and I, I could go sit on my front porch and just go watch and go see. The other thing, you know, while I'm up here to make it in a positive moment, I have on this sweatshirt that is Portsmouth Restaurant Week. Somebody said, you know, we don't have any fine restaurants in Portsmouth. They go to Suffolk and all that, you know, had this conversation with somebody on Facebook. And I said, you really believe that? I said, have you been downtown? Have you been, you know, the church, you know, it's five restaurants all over, every restaurant that participated in Portsmouth Restaurant Week. I would, I hope to get it before the end of this week, I'm telling you. I love it. I, I love that, that, that is one partnership I have seen Portsmouth do that promote, that helps all of us. Because nobody likes to be hungry, and I can tell you, all of those establishments really serve good food, they have good people, and they, they, they present a lot to Portsmouth, and they make it worth coming home to Portsmouth every day. You know, I get to see a lot, and what I do, I get to see a lot of other places, but it's nothing like coming home to Portsmouth where you can walk in one of those establishments, they know you by name, they know your favorite dish, and they know your favorite drink. And I'm quite sure some of us need to go after we leave this meeting. So trust me, I'm going to be one of them, and, and I'm just going to see for what it is. The last part of what I want to say, and this is on, really serious, you know, Mr. Roundtree is related to me. And it was sad because I, I take accountability of my own self, I forgot that that was my family member. My cousin posted what happened on Facebook, and I'm up there with my siblings, I'm talking about your condolences to your family, and that's part of my family. And I'm, I'm encouraging everybody to get to, if you forget anything, if you don't, if you remember anything, remember this, stay connected to your people because you never know when it's going to hit home for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Randall.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Manager and Members-at-Large. Happy New Year's, Barry Randall Jenkins from the Prentice Park Brighton section of the city. Actually, with the atmosphere, and I promise you, I come in peace tonight, we're partially peace, okay? Uh, because of stuff that I've heard, but, um, I, I come in another format, um, asking you guys to do a street name change, and I know the process, and I'm doing it backwards for a reason. I do have the application, I am going to reach out to Mr. Sweat, um, in the Planning Department, but, um, I see, you know, so many people that we've been giving street names to and doing different things for, and, um, this person don't even know I'm here to ask on their behalf tonight, and no council member up there knows because I didn't want it to turn political, and the reason why I'm asking you all first, because we getting ready to get into a very bloody season of this election, and unfortunately for us here in Portsmouth, we so personality driven. If we like you, if you talking to somebody we don't like, and it, it just gets very crazy. But anyway, um, looking at Senator Elouise Lucas, um, she has done such a remarkable job, and I'm not going to be fake like some people here, try it out like they was always Team Lucas. When they redid the district drawing, I didn't think Senator Lucas stood a chance at winning her seat back. Um, I, I did vote for her, I got on board at the end, um, when I saw her opponent doing some shady things, but nevertheless, um, she's been a warrior for a long time, regardless whether you voted for her, like her, don't like her, she has always amazed us. So as you're coming from Victory Crossing, um, going through the first light of Cavalier Boulevard, the second light you get to, most people think that's completely Freedom Avenue or Freedom Drive, whatever it is. If you turn right at the, um, the, the chicken place, well, the Royal Farms, that, that's, that's salted chicken, I know, um, that's Freedom Avenue, but if you turn light left to go into the casino, that is TCC Drive. And believe it or not, nobody uses the address at all. So it won't be an issue at all because the campus is, TCC is on Campus Drive. So TCC Drive just goes to the left and do the roundabout. So I think that we need to make sure because, yes, we looked out for Mrs. Elliott and, and the people and all these other great people and what have you that will come here once a year probably, but Senator Lucas, whether we want to admit it or not, we wouldn't have that casino if it wasn't for her. Whether you was voted for, didn't vote for, and vote y'all love, talking about you didn't vote for, but we always see you up in the casino. But nevertheless, um, I think that TCC Drive needs to be changed to Senator L. Louise Lucas Drive. And I don't think that we should wait for people to die to give them their flowers. We need to appreciate them while they are alive, and whether you all want to admit it or not, um, she really has pulled off some tremendous things, and, and, and whether we looking at this thing or not, from the crime standpoint of Portsmouth, let's be real, people, everybody envy Portsmouth because we have the casino. And when you're in the casino, you don't even think you're in Portsmouth. And I think that we need to make sure that we bring great credit to where credit is due. So I will be filling out the application and do all the necessary procedure. Um, again, Vice Mayor didn't even know I was going to ask this tonight. So if it is something to go forward, I will, um, defer to the family and get community support. Nobody's paying me to do this and what have you. I'm not going to call Aaron Carter's name. I don't do stuff like that. So I'm not, you know, going to be trying to get paid to get some for somebody else. I don't do stuff like that. But let me say this in my conclusion. Councilman Moody, you know, me and you have had a rough start, but I want to commend you today because don't ever apologize for speaking up for your community and for your people. I was watching a town hall with Minister Farrakhan and Jesse Jackson, and I can look you all in the face as I talk to you. And Farrakhan talked about how all these brilliant minds that these people had, but he said something, he said, what's the purpose? He was talking to Reverend Jackson, because we got a lot of Reverend Jacksons sitting up here. He said, what's the purpose of having a brilliant mind if it's not connected to a black body? For those of you all that want to talk about Dale's Home and all this stuff, we've had people that's from Dale's Home on council, been up here for five years. Is Dale's Home any better? We've had people on council that's from the black community. Is the black community doing any better in Portsmouth? We got to stop allowing people to use race because it's not a black side or white side, but it's God's side.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Leon Hammond. Mr. Hammond, you still here, sir? Take, take your time, sir.
Uh, got some good speakers here. My part is the, I'll say it looks like Israel and Hamas in cer, in certain areas, and Ukraine and Russia. It's been looking like that for some time. And you go down High Street, time you cross Effingham Street, it's like a Twilight Zone. Why have we not developed that point? That's what I would like to know. Why we have not developed? Every time we develop something, it's from the waterfront down to Effingham. And then you just forget about the rest of the High Street corridor. I don't know how much tax you get. You can't be getting too much tax because you got Pilz's, uh, 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 store, and that thing is older than I am, sitting there vacant, has been there 100 years there. And it is a ISO. The only thing, uh, and then you got other vacant houses and everything else around it in the city that needs to be torn down or improved so we can get a tax off of that instead of depending on the casino. Because that casino, as soon as Norfolk get there's going, it, as soon as they, you know, as soon as, uh, Norfolk get there's going, it's going to be a competition there because that tone is hurting us. Every year it hurts us as far as the fair going through there. But it doesn't make any sense though that, that we are letting buildings stand that don't need to stand. And you got inspectors driving by every day, and the old dilapidated buildings are just standing there. Who wants to build anything and you got an ISO standing there? Who wants to be, come there new to build anything, you got an ISO standing there? The majority of the roads and highways bypasses Portsmouth, if you really, if you really look at it. The super highways go up above Portsmouth and keep running Norfolk. Whichever way it goes, Mid-Town Towns, Suffolk Way, or Downtown Towns. We need to have other than the casino for the people, the public to stop and be able to enjoy what Portsmouth can, can offer besides just up from the waterfront to Effingham. Now, Old Town is fine and dandy, but you need to spread it out a little bit. It doesn't make any sense though, you can't move a little further. It's been like that for some time now, so y'all need to step up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I would like to thank y'all for allowing me to be able to share, uh, some information that a lot of people out here don't know about. Uh, my name is Sheila Joseph. I'm at 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I've been putting out on my website about the things that we've been asking for, and now things are being, uh, investigated about environmental. We talk about environmental justice, EPA, and also the CDC is here, all of them is here to deal with the Superfund site, and it's very important that people would have came out last night. I'm sorry y'all missed it. It was very well. And we're going to be working together with these people to address the issues because a lot of people was here that didn't have issues with council or they just chose not to ask question. We had a few people that asked a lot of question. Um, some way from other areas out in Churchland, a lady and her daughter and other people had lost loved ones to cancer. And I spoke about my loved ones. It prompted them to talk about theirs. Uh, Camp Medjune, I say to people, doing a good job. I would like to see the city of Portsmouth, and I, I'm not saying it's going to be laid on y'all's shoulder, because I feel that it should be a community effort to spread the word and get this information. And the ones that's doing the advertisement, Mr. Pete, um, a lot of people was upset because they said they didn't know nothing about it, but I put a lot of it, you know, and somehow they found out that I put it on my website because I received the letter. And I feel that it's, it's a lot of people need to get involved, to get the knowledge. But the people that was here last night, Mr. Alexander and Victoria and Mr. Eric and Jonah, all of them did a, a good job, including the CDC. And what they was asking for, people to get more involved and communicating with them and leave their information, so feel free to call. So I thought it was a good idea to put it on my website and tell people to go on, uh, Together we can make a difference. And click on News and then go to, um, EPA. It was very informative of what they have on the site, and they have video. And what I'm trying to tell people is they need to be educated on the things that they are exposed to here in our city. And I'm using our city for an example because we had flooding issues and we talked about Washington Park, we talked about, um, IC Norcom and other places and Shipyard, that I had family members that was contaminated, uh, and they end up dead with asbestos on the area off in Effingham. I wanted the people to know the facts because it is very important to learn things. And Camp Medjune, I was so glad when they came on talking about those things, and I won't get into an invasion about, uh, the things that I know. I just want people to contact me at WW dot TWC, and some people used to know me off the radio, they would say WW dot TWC mad, so you can remember it real quick, but it stands for Together We Can Make A Difference. Um, our children, they talk about the lead, but they don't talk about the asbestos that a lot of people are exposed to. And some of them are from Washington Park, they still living with terrible sickness. Some of them don't have no kidney at all, they just live on a dialysis machine. Uh, the ones in my family is stage four. This stuff is taking over Portsmouth. We need y'all help. I'm talking about the community.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Joseph. Next speaker is Nathaniel Curry. Nathaniel Curry, are you here, sir?
Yep.
If you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Nathaniel Curry.
If you would please speak into the microphone.
I'm from Out of Barbara, Washington Park, I'm from everywhere, every, every park. But, uh, I want to bring up my cousin, Michelle Edie. She basically ran Parks and Recreation, but I don't want to say thi, I'm going to say this, she was my mentor, and it would be rightfully that she get a street, a building or something named after her. She, uh, she directed me in the right path since I was younger. And I'm quite sure every young man my age or better knew about her. If you did anything wrong in those rec centers, there's somebody looking at the window saying, heck, Miss Edie, you going to stop what you doing and get in order. So if y'all don't know who she is, research. Uh, very fine, wonderful woman, self, she outspoken. She's not going to cut no corners with you. She's going to be who she is, and that's Miss Edie. So if you have any street that's open, a sign or something, I would like to have a street, a building, something dedicated in her name because she gave these children out here away from Out of Barbara, Washington Park- From Otter Bobble, Washington Park, every rec center in the city know her. If you worked in the eighties, nineties, two thousands, leading up to the time that she passed away, your children know who Miss Edie was. She was nothing to play with. She gonna give to you as it is, how it is, and it's her way in those rec centers. All the kids loved her. It was a safe haven. These rec centers was a safe haven for me and so many other young children out here in the city of Portsmouth. What's going on now, it don't have to go on. You have to put the right people in play. And honestly, the people that's in play is not right. That's just my honest opinion. So you get more people like Miss Edie that these children can respect and look up to, Portsmouth will be a little bit more better. A lot more better, if you ask me. It's not about the money, it's not about none of that. These children need guidance, from the young males to the females. They need guidance, man. And Mr. Glover, mayor, I'm looking at you because right now, you on the horse, you riding the horse, but you not guiding, you just off in the wind. So we need you to get off that horse, come into the community and see what's really going on. We need more people like my cousin, who stepped foot on these grounds, walked these grounds, stepped inside of houses throughout the whole neighborhood and taught the parents. She gave children away. Summer jobs, it was there. When the pool was open, you had a job. It's cool. The nonprofit organization that's going out here is cool. But if you not gonna open up these rec centers and give them away the way my cousin gave away, we losing, man. We losing, bruh. I done did over twenty some years in the prison. I came home to this. I've been home eight years now. This is what I come home to. I have spoken at events, I do a lot for the children. I just don't put my name out there. I'm well-known. Black man, step up, arm yourself, each and every last one of you, not with the rifle and not with the gun. Put this city on your back and guide it, lead it. My cousin did it and she won a mayor or nothing, but she did it and got respect. And I leave with that.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Carlista Grimes. Ms. Grimes, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Good evening, ma'am.
Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. I am here on behalf of my late daughter, Michelle Lynette Edie, a wife becoming a widow January of 2017, a mother, a sister, an auntie, and cousin mentor, and the first daughter born to the late Josephus J. Edie and yours truly on July 9th, 1961. She was educated in the Portsmouth school system, graduating from Cradock High School, where she also participated on the basketball team. Going on to earn an associate degree from Tyre Water Community College, transferring her credits to ODU, where she earned a bachelor's degree in personnel psychology. Michelle was employed by Parks and Rec beginning with the summer program for youth, where at the school she was kept for the youth. At the high school, she was kept on as a part-time employee through college. A few months after graduating from college, she was offered a full-time position where she spent forty-plus years. In that time, she was promoted to superintendent of recreation. That position she held until her death, November the 14th, 2021. She has been a dedicated employee and has given so much to the youth, seniors, and the city as a whole. Not only Portsmouth, but other Hampton Road cities. There has been a partnership formed between Parks and Recreation and Portsmouth Redeveloping and Housing Authority because of her involvement. She has mentored youth in this city in many ways, even standing in courtrooms before judges advocating for them. People are still coming up to me that I don't know, but they are wanting me to know the impact that Miss Edie had on their kids' lives and the difference it has made. There is a young lady in Chester, Virginia, who contacted me last year about an echoes of joy she had in Miss Edie's memory. By the way, this event was launched and created by Miss Edie for the city of Portsmouth. She also stated that she had mentored her through high school and college. How she finished college and came back to Portsmouth, applied for a job at Parks and Recreation and was hired. So I think Miss Edie is deserving to be recognized by a city she loves so much and went above and beyond for the youth, seniors, and others in the city that she could help. So we are asking this council tonight to consider naming a street or a rec center in her name. She may not be a celebrity according to your definition of a celebrity, but to her family and those she was, she has mentored too, she is our celebrity that we love and miss very much. I'm here tonight because in the past two years that she has expired, I have asked the mayor if the city was going to do anything or if he would do something to recognize my daughter. And I have been told, give me your number and I will call you back. The most recent encounter was December. I am a member of the task force for the agent for the city of Portsmouth, was in December at a meeting where he was the guest speaker. He had me to put my telephone number in his telephone and I will get with Ms. White and have her to set up a meeting between Ms. Terry, yourself, and I. That has not happened. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking this of this city council. I mean, this is someone that loved the city, that served the city. You know, we recognize people. I watch every city council meeting from my living room, okay? We watch this city recognize and give dedication and all to people that have not given what my daughter gave. And I think that she is deserving of some recognition because she served this city, she served Parks and Rec, and she served them well. All right? And I thank you all.
Our next speaker is Lisa Hankinson. Lisa Hankinson, is, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, it's Hankinson.
Hankinson.
Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of the city council, good evening. I am Lisa Hankinson and I reside in the Waterstone community in the city of Chesapeake. If you would, go with me on a journey. That journey starts forty-four years ago. I'm thirteen years old and have decided to join my sibling at her place of employment. It's evening, buses are returning from a field trip. It was customary for her to check each and every bus, no matter what, and this evening was no different. Not just for cleanliness, but to ensure there were no kids left behind. Lo and behold, this particular evening, there was an eight-year-old hiding in the back. She sternly but lovingly asked him why he didn't get off his stop and go home. His response was, I want to stay with you. I don't want to go back home. Not only did she and the bus driver drive him home, but she went into the home and talked with his mother. And I specifically remember, I sat on that bus for an hour waiting because I was getting a little impatient. Let's move ahead four years. I'm now seventeen years old, have decided to visit her at work yet again. I'm upstairs in her office, talking when this young man walks in, speaks and asks if there's anything he can do for her. Did she want anything to eat or drink from the corner store? She just told him to go downstairs, keep those grades up, and make a hoop for her. She then asked me if I remembered him. I didn't. And that's when she told me that he was the same young man that had hid on the bus. He was tall, healthy, happy, and she went on to tell me that he was excelling in school, a model student. Needless to say, that one hour spent that night talking to his family changed the trajectory of his life. Now let's pass forward to December 2023. I'm sitting at my dinner table and somehow her name comes up. My friend stops her, our whole conversation, when she hears her name and begins to talk about how she and her children would not have made it without her help and how she'd even offered her husband a job. I'll stop there, but I can tell you, I, my mother, and her daughter encounter numerous people all the time with the same testimonials. The stories all point to how their lives were forever changed when she provided resources and help to their families and more. Who is this person, you may ask? None other than my beloved sister and your former superintendent of Parks and Recreation and Tourism, the late, great, still impactful and incomparable Michelle Lynette Edie, more affectionately known as Miss Edie. No, she didn't win a Grammy or wasn't known internationally for doing so, although I was recently made aware that she is known nationally for her many interactions with vendors in various parts of the United States. But what she did was helped to elevate children and their families to a level where they were able to take care of themselves with pride and pay it forward, helping others and be productive citizens in their community. She made a lasting impression and never complained, never disappointed. I witnessed her spend countless hours far beyond what's considered normal hours perfecting grants for the city. And FYI, she wouldn't even accept a form from those under her supervision that contained whiteout. I've taken you on just a minute-sized journey of what she's done and meant to this city. Her supervisor at the time and a few coworkers that we dearly appreciated attended her funeral, but no city officials were in attendance to share any words of her tireless work, no declaration read or given to the family. Although egregious, we've made peace with that for a greater cause. She was our beloved and we honor her as such. But the impact she's made and continues to make in this city, even years after her passing, warrants nothing less than a memorial from and in the city and should not be ignored. A building would be nice, but in time could be demolished. So I am petitioning for a street named in her honor. She deserves nothing less. And quite frankly, her matchless dedication deserves even greater. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Merrell Rutledge.
Mayor.
Councilman Tillis, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Grimes and to the family of Miss Edie. Miss Edie definitely was a huge part of the city of Portsmouth. And I think whenever you thought about Park and Rec, you thought about Miss Edie. And when you thought about Miss Edie, you thought about Park and Rec. You know, her, she played a huge role in everything Park and Rec, but I exclusively remember volunteering every Memorial Day weekend for Ymoja Festival. And she was a drill sergeant and she would put you to work and didn't care what you wanted to do. But she was highly respected in the community and I just wanna thank you all for working to continue her legacy. It was mentioned earlier in this meeting about one of my colleagues, about the city working to put together a program to honor people who have contributed to the city, such as Miss Edie and many others. And so, we're gonna allow our city staff to get back with us on that. And I promise you, we will work towards working to honor people such as Miss Edie that have done so much for our city. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Merrell Rutledge. Doesn't look like Mr. Rutledge is still with us. Our next speaker is Mr. Andy Sutter. Mr. Sutter, if you come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Andy Sutter, 10 Crawford Parkway down here in Portsmouth. I wanted to come before you today to talk to you about the difference between the tax rate that I'm paying on my business boats in Portsmouth compared to the businesses that I have. I have three franchise businesses, Norfolk and Hampton and Newport News. The tax rate that I'm paying in Portsmouth is five dollars per every one hundred dollars of assessed value on my boats. So on a five hundred thousand dollars worth of boats in Portsmouth, I'm paying twenty-five thousand dollars a year in tax to the city to operate my business just on my boats. That's not my business license or anything else. In, in Newport News and Hampton, the same five hundred thousand dollars worth of boats cost me five thousand dollars in tax. So it's, it's very prohibitive for me to keep operating my business in Portsmouth. So my ask is that if you could ask the city manager to take a look, to compare the tax rates between Newport News and Hampton to Portsmouth, that'd be great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Grande Gomez. Sir, if you come, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Armando Grande Gomez, California Circle. Mr. Mayor, I just wanna point out one thing really quickly. In the past, I've messaged with you all and tried to have a message to each and every one of you of coming together in unity and importance, and that just seems to fall on deaf ears. So if that approach doesn't work, I'm gonna take a different approach. I can really say to each and every one of you that's up on the dais, I have never at one time ever said an unkind word. I've never been disrespectful. I've never done any of the sort. But what I find extremely disconcerting and unfortunate is watching a lot of very intelligent and bright people on that dais have a race to mediocrity. And you all move as one body, so I'm not talking to any individual person, I'm talking to the group. And the race to mediocrity means that you are doing things like this. Let's do a recap, because we're just coming into 2024. If we look back at 2023, what are some highlights that we can all remember? I can tell you something I remember. I remember this group having a debate about somebody's little cellphone. Whether it was an iPhone or an Android. Now, I don't like people with iPhones, because usually people with iPhones, those aren't grown-up phones. People that have grown-up phones are Androids. And you all were debating about whether somebody should have an iPhone. So here's my question. Please tell me, if anybody up there, and I'm not gonna have a back and forth, this is a rhetorical question, how did that affect anybody back here or anybody with the sound of my voice in Portsmouth? Did it lower the crime rate? Did it stop shootings? Did it bring in jobs? Did it have an economic impact? But you all took all that time to talk about this, whether it's up there. And here's how we know that it did have an economic impact. You sent your, your staff attorney, your city attorney, who's a wonderful person, very bright, spent all that time. I don't know how much he charges an hour, but most attorneys charge, let's say it's five hundred dollars an hour. How much time did she commit to spending on those hours to talk about this little cellphone? Whether Mr. Barnes' little phone was, you know, an iPhone 15, it wasn't even out then, but whatever. But you all spent time on that. And then tonight, tonight, here's what's rich. You all spent time on nothingness. And here's how we know that. Here's how we know that. We know that because you have, you have a police chief who, a lot of you say, we love public safety, we support public safety, we believe in public safety, whether it's police and fire. And that man, I think his name is Steven Jenkins, wonderful person. Your police chief came up here and told each and every one of you that we shouldn't do something called having things like collective bargaining. And what did you all do? You all said, ah, police chief, what do you know? You're a law enforcement professional, but you know what? Screw you. You gave him the middle finger. What did you do to your interim city manager, who some of you claimed to like? What did you do to your interim city manager, who some of you claimed to like? You said, "We don't care what you say. Bright woman, knows finances back and front." What did you give her the middle finger? And you're back here saying worried about an Airbnb or whatever. And then one gentleman comes up here and talks about, "Well, this race or that race, and we're supposedly post-race." Let me be very clear. Don't, I told you all last time, don't let the light skin fool you. So let me be very, 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 very clear about, there is no post-race here. Harriet Tubman made a phrase, and I'll be very clear what she said. "I freed thousands of slaves and could have freed thousands more if they only knew they were slaves." So to the gentleman that made the statement, making attacks at any one of you individuals up there, it's unfortunate. We're talking about who lives in this neighborhood, and I don't like this person. We need all of you to work for them. But y'all are fighting amongst yourselves and nobody cares. They care, they sent you there to do work. I don't care about what your individual beefs are or who wants to call a point order, who wants to one-up each other about who knows protocol. Because really, a lot of y'all don't know protocol. Because you can absolutely appeal the rule of the chair. Should read Robert Chu's Award, it's really important. Really, really important. So I like every one of you up there. I have no gripe with anybody. But I think that the race to mediocrity, everybody back here is losing. You aren't addressing economic impacts to anything. You're not. We watch you, meeting after meeting. This is the greatest show on the road. I can ride up and down 95 and watch y'all. I do. I brag about y'all. I thought where I come from in Florida, they was the greatest show on earth? No, y'all are goddamn far beat. Love y'all. I have never heard this gentleman to my far right, your left, over here, Brother Tillage, ever say hardly a word. Love you, bruh. Brother Barnes, know him. I love every one of y'all, really do. Some of y'all I don't even know. I've never had an unkind word. Mr. Moody's a nice guy. The conscience of it is this brother right here, Dr. Whitaker, love him. Don't have a problem with you, except sometimes you just want to kick people out. Still love you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers for the evening. If there's no more business for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.